Welcome to the special meeting of the Oceanside City Council, December 11th. Everyone, welcome. We're going to go ahead and get started. First with road call, please. Mr. Navarro.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keim.
Here.
Councilmember Joyce.
Present.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you. Please stand for the invocation. Tonight, today. Today, we have Captain Mel Vernon of the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians, who is going to be doing the land acknowledgement and invocation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, councilpeople, public. This land that we are on here in Oceanside and the community is traditional territory of the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians, Lusenios. There are a Luseno Nation. This land has our, for 10,000 years, has been a part of our living history. This is our creation story. This is how far back we go. The San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians is part of the Luseno Nation, which includes Pachanga, Paula, Rincon, Palma, Soboba, and La Jolla. This land holds our ancestors, artifacts of our village, connecting the past, present, and also leading to the future. It's not just about the land, it's about the people, and we're still here. Thank you. Oh, Grandfather, Creator. Today, we have come together in unity to ask your divine presence to be with us, to open our hearts and minds in a good way. We ask you to give our city leaders your guidance, wisdom, and courage. Grandfather, as our community prepares to take another step on our long journey, lead us with your spiritual compass toward a future of health, kindness, and prosperity for all of your children, all that live and breathe, and share the web of life with us. Grandfather, we thank you for this wonderful day, the warmth of the sun, the blue ocean, and your gift of life. Oh, amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Please remain standing. For the National Anthem, we have Ann Givens.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? Had the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gay proved through the night that our flag, it was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, Ann Givens. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance, so please remain standing. We have Rafael Monroy, Latino veteran, OUSD employee, coming up to lead us.
How do you follow?
Thank you, Ann. I need the mic. I want to dedicate, and I think we should dedicate this pledge to the mothers, the fathers, spouses, the sons and the daughters of our veterans, many of you here, so I want to dedicate that to you. So, a pledge really to the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, in the mission of the received and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you so much. You may be seated. We have one general item. At its number one, in accordance with California Elections Code Section 10262 to 10265, staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution declaring the results of the city's general municipal election held on Tuesday, November 5, 2024, and swear in the newly elected officials. Staff is also requesting an appropriation of $54,000 to cover the cost of services provided by the San Diego County Registrar of Voters.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, Zeb Navarro, City Clerk. I'm here today to give a presentation on the adoption of a resolution declaring the results of the general municipal election of November 5, 2024, and the swearing-in of our newly elected official. In accordance with the California Elections Code, staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution declaring the results of the city's general municipal election that was held on November 5, and swear in the newly elected official. These are the election results based on the results provided by the Registrar of Voters. The following candidates were elected. For the office of Mayor, Esther C. Sanchez was elected to the office of Mayor. For the office of Councilmember District 3, Jimmy Figueroa was elected. For the office of District 4, Councilmember Peter Weiss was elected. For the office of City Clerk, Zeb Navarro was elected. And finally, for the office of City Treasurer, Phyllis Dominguez was elected. And I just want to kind of go off script and also thank the others that ran for public office. It takes a lot of courage to put yourself out there, be out there and be attacked and poked and prodded, and just taking it all from everybody, from the public. So, I do want to publicly acknowledge Ryan Keim, who ran for mayor. For District 3, I would like to acknowledge Laura Basset, Tom DeMoy, and Austin Sorensen. For District 4, I would like to acknowledge Amber Kay Nua Toa and Omar Hashimi. And for City Treasurer, Jack Fernandez and Victor Roy. And also to their families as well, because as candidates, we have thick skin and we could take it, but I know for the families, it's a lot of hardship and sacrifice, so I'd want to acknowledge every single candidate's family right now. Mayor and councilmembers, also on the ballot this election was Measure X, and based on the results from the Registrar of Voters, Measure X has passed. So, staff now recommends that in accordance to various election codes, that the city council adopt a resolution declaring the results of the city's general municipal election held on Tuesday, November 5, and swear in the newly elected officials. In addition to that, staff also is requesting a budget appropriation of $54,000, services provided by the San Diego County Registrar of Voters. This concludes my presentation, and I will be available for any questions the council has.
Thank you, Mr. Navarro. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
We have not.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move the motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote. Did you want to say something? I don't have any lights here.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Okay, so we have item number two for the city council, and that is remarks by departing city officials.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan Keim.
Six years ago, when I was sworn in, last minute, I said something, I thought I was the most optimistic about the city I had ever been, and that's continued until now, six years later. And the way, the reason I feel that way now, it's the hard work, it's not from us up here, it's from all of you out there, is I walked in today, I saw so many people that I made such great relationships with, and I just want to thank all of you for your partnership over the last six years, your advice, your encouragement. It's a tough job, but I think that was the best thing I got out of my six years on council, was the relationships I built, and I am truly grateful for everyone that helped with that, so thank you very I'm very proud to be leaving my seat to someone that I know cares about the city very much. Jimmy Figueroa worked really hard. He's been here his whole life, he's dedicated his life to the city, and I'm looking forward to seeing all the great things he's going to do on council, too. Zeb said something when he was making his comments about how tough it can be being in elected office, and you see it at the highest levels of government in Washington, how divided people are, how nasty people are, and we can't fix that, but we can fix Oceanside. And we can treat each other with dignity and respect, get good policy done, disagree, have very hard, tough conversations, but treat everyone the way you want to be treated. And I think we can show an example here, and I think we've got the council to do it. So, just, I would ask everyone in here, when you're working with council, you're working with staff members, do what you can to help them be successful, and that's what we all want. So, again, I appreciate everyone in here who's impacted the city, very importantly, staff. I think that's something that we ask for a lot up here, and when we make a simple motion and get it seconded, that turns into hours and hours of staff time. They do a fantastic job. We have some of the most fantastic city staff in the county, if not the state. So, I also want to thank you for all of your hard work and all the support you've given me and the rest of council the last six years. It's been fantastic, so thank you very much, Again, thank you all for being here today. It's fantastic showing. Congratulations, Mayor Esther Sanchez, and looking forward to all the next great years we have for the city.
Okay, as we, I think, I think Councilmember, well, Ryan, as we move into the swearing-in, you'll be asked to step down, and then the new council member will be sitting in your place. Thank you so much for years of service. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and start with our city council ceremonial swearing-in of newly-elected officials. We're going to begin with our city clerk, who has to do a lot of work after he is sworn in, as the official city clerk for 2024 to 2028, Mr. Zeb Navarro. He is being sworn in by Assistant City Clerk Thomas Schmittler.
I, Zeb Navarro.
I, Zeb Navarro.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I will.
That I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties of the office of the city clerk.
Of the city of Oceanside.
Of the city of Oceanside.
According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability.
Pretty good, since he didn't have anybody running against him, okay? Next, we have Phyllis Dominguez, elected. Elected to City Treasurer, and she is being sworn in by City Clerk Zeb Navarro.
Please raise your right hand. I, Phyllis Dominguez.
I, Phyllis Dominguez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of City Treasurer.
Of the office of City Treasurer.
Of the city of Oceanside.
Of the city of Oceanside.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. We will be having remarks by the newly-elected after we finish the swearing-in, the ceremonial swearing-in. Next, we have Jimmy Figueroa. Elected to Councilmember District 3, and he is, he will be sworn in by Joe Talau and Timothy Jackson.
God bless you, too. Thank you. Before you swear in, sir, raise your right hand. I, Jimmy Figueroa.
I, Jimmy Figueroa.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the obligation freely.
To the Constitution of the obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And I will and faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
And the duties of the office.
Of member of the city council.
And the members of city council.
District 3.
District 3.
Of the city of Oceanside.
Of the city of Oceanside.
According to the best of my abilities.
Next, we have Councilmember Peter Weiss, elected. Councilmember elected to District 4. He is being sworn in by City Clerk Zeb Navarro.
Can I have Rudy do it? You want Rudy to do it?
Do we have a couple of hours?
I, Peter Weiss.
I, Peter Weiss.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Member of the city council, District 4.
Member of the city council, District 4.
Of the city of Oceanside.
Of the city of Oceanside.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And I'm next, okay? I have asked Maria Nunez, Councilwoman from the city of San Marcos, to swear me in. Okay, we're actually sisters. Her mom is here, too. Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Esther C. Sanchez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Of Mayor.
Of Mayor. Of the city of Oceanside.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities. Thank you, guys! Thank you! All right, this is the part where we hear from our newly-elected officials, and I'm just going to go ahead and go in the order that we swore folks in, and so we're going to go ahead and start with Zeb Navarro, our city clerk.
Thank you. I just want to thank everybody for their support for the past four years. I know I didn't have an opponent in this race, but I don't take that lightly. I think that's just a testament to my promise that I made four years ago, actually, more than four years ago, when the council appointed me to fill the remainder term of Zach Beck's term, I made a promise that I'm going to keep my head down, do hard work, not cause a ruckus, not cause a scandal, maintain the integrity of the office of the city clerk, and my goal was to make you forget that the city clerk was elected, and I think I accomplished As I tell new employees coming in, the office of the city clerk, we don't fix potholes, we don't provide the water that goes to your house, we don't pick up trash. The one thing we do is customer service, whether you want to connect with a council member, you're filing a public records request, or you have a historical question like, "My name is engraved on the pier, what do I do?" We are here to answer any questions that you have and to provide the best customer service there is to the citizens of Oceanside, because I consider this my job appraisal and my job review, and I'm glad I passed, because as I tell everybody that comes to my office, you are my boss. The citizens of Oceanside are my boss, and I answer to you directly. So, with that, everyone is welcome to my office, regardless of political affiliation, regardless of how you feel about one issue or another. You will get great customer service thanks to my wonderful staff, Thomas Schmittler, Caleb Valdivinos, Leslie Aguilar, Stephanie Rojas, Alexia Williams, Milo Brown, Michael Jones, and David Sanchez, Daniel Sanchez, I apologize. And I just want to really thank my family and my supporters, because when I filed the run and we were ready to gear up for the election, everybody was ready to go to war and ready to knock on doors, ready to put up signs and everything, and it was a great feeling to know that I didn't have an opponent in this race. So, I just want to thank my family for being supportive and for allowing me to have my Wednesday nights here for council meetings. I also like to thank my students at Palomar College, who before were not interested in city politics in the city of Oceanside, and now they ask me lots of questions about the city of Oceanside. And I'd like to acknowledge four, four people whose names are on this building, who took a very awkward boy who was interested in politics and kind of nurtured his love for civics. I'd like to thank first and foremost Lucy Chavez, a former councilwoman. Mayor Larry Bagley, who took me into his office one day and talked to me a lot. Former councilman Sam Williamson, who I worked on all of his campaigns, and all of them. And finally, to former councilmember Melba Bishop, who, when I had a weird idea for a youth commission... a youth commission, she just perked up and said, "All right, Zeb, I'm gonna tell you what to do." And I will never forget the kindness four of those councilmembers showed to a very, very awkward boy from the East Side. So thank you very much.
Next is Phyllis Dominguez, our new city treasurer. Phyllis.
Well, hello, everyone. I am truly humbled to be here today. I have not run for public office before, and I'm only here because of this community, because of Oceanside, and all the wonderful people that helped me. In the next four years, I look forward to working for the people of Oceanside, as Zeb so nicely put, because I'm elected. I work for you. I don't work for anybody else. And I'm looking forward to getting my hands dirty, learning more about the treasurer position. I'm gonna bring integrity. I wanna bring a sense of transparency. And like Zeb's office, my office door is always open. And I hope you come in and talk to me if you have any questions that I can answer. I'd be more than happy to, and if I can't answer them, I'll find out who can. The journey to get here was a long one. There are so many people to thank. The past city council, current city council, and future city council. They all gave me advice. They gave me support and answered all the questions as somebody who's not run for office before. Again, thank you for that. For all the people who knocked on doors. I know Steve Burrell's here somewhere. He must have knocked on 400,000 doors for me. Eric Joyce, Michelle Seer, who is always there to kind of boost me up when I said, "I don't know if I can do this, this is really scary." But she was always there for me, so thank you, Michelle. The number of people who opened up their homes so I could talk to my neighbors and their neighbors and say, "Hey, this is who I am. I'm running for Oceanside City Treasurer. You don't know me, but I'd like to get to know you." And just all the community members that I didn't mention. But I do have to thank my family for putting up with me for this last year and a half. Huge amount of support. My sons are here. And of course, my husband Daniel, who is still married to me. He hasn't left me with all this. So again, thank you, Oceanside. I'm truly grateful for this opportunity, and I look forward to serving as your city treasurer for the next four years. Thank you.
Next is Jimmy Figueroa, our new councilmember for District Three.
Thank you, Zeb. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I, this is a very surreal moment, as you know, just a Mexican kid that grew up in Tri-City to be on city council. I can't even tell you the words or how I'm feeling at this moment. I'm lost for words. But I wanna start off by thanking my wife, just for all of your support. Your patience, your love through this process, but not just this process. As I've done work here in the community of Oceanside, it's like, I always come to her and like, "Baby, this has to work. We have to do this. This community needs this." And I'm just so grateful for you. To my daughters, Sala and Eliza, I hope that this shows you that through hard work, purpose, consistency, you can achieve your dreams. And I want you to know that no role, job that I will ever have will be more important than being your father and the husband to your mom. So I just want to. A day after, or right after Election Tuesday, when the ballots closed, I got a text message from my brother Timothy Jackson. And he said... He said, "Tomorrow morning, you'll be waking up on the other side of history for your family in Oceanside." My parents immigrated here from Juana Huato and Zacatecas in the '70s, and they came to Solana Beach and Encinitas. And when those communities started getting gentrified, they moved to Oceanside in pursuit of the American dream. And that's where I was born, in Tri-City. And I don't think that they could have ever imagined this moment, that their son would be a city councilmember. I hope to them that they know I'm very thankful for their sacrifices, everything they've done for our family and for all my family that's here, you know, from all over Oceanside. When people were knocking on doors for me and we were working on this campaign, I would always hear from the volunteers, "Man, you got cousins everywhere." And we do. We have deep roots here in Oceanside. And from my family in Juana Huato and Zacatecas, who have messaged me on Facebook, telling me how I've inspired them. And having their support just means everything. When I was asked, when I was informed about this ceremony, they said, "You can have someone swear you in." And immediately, I said, "I want Joe Talau and Timothy Jackson to swear me in." For those of you that don't know Joe and Timothy, they're former gang members here in the city of Oceanside. They're former rival gang members here in the city of Oceanside back in the '80s and '90s, where this was a very tough place to grow up. But they came together several years ago as brothers to serve our youth on juvenile probation, to work here in the community, to bring hope and walk alongside kids that were also experiencing many of the things that they'd experienced. And to me, having them swear me in, I hope is a symbol of unity. I wanna show Oceanside that we can be unified. If we have two individuals... Two community leaders who have done so much and had such an impact on our youth here in the city, but at one point 20 years ago, they had a lot of issues with one another. And if they can put down those issues to better serve our community, we all can do that. And that's what I want my legacy to be. Service and unity. In 2017, one of my students from Libby Lake, Bernardo Ramirez, was killed in front of his house. Shot at 6:00 in the morning in his work uniform in front of his dad. There's been a lot of youth that I worked with that have lost their lives, and this moment is for them. I dedicate me being swearing into city council for them. For my students at Libby Lake Reach, my resilience youth, the families that I helped serve at Operation Hope North County, I dedicate this to them. And for the residents of District Three, I am truly honored to be your next city council member. And my top priorities will be to serve the challenges and issues of our neighborhoods and our communities, from South Though to Ocean Hills, from Fire Mountain to Tri-City, Hanny Hills and Rancho Deloro. Your top priorities are my top priorities. I'm here for the neighborhoods. I'm here for the people of District Three. And I'm here to serve the city with the principles of unity and service. And thank you all. I really appreciate it.
Next is Councilmember Peter Weiss, District Four.
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanna thank the voters of District Four for giving me the opportunity to serve another four years. And even though we get elected by districts, we do need to wear our broader city-wide hats, because the five of us together and collectively have to make decisions that affect everyone in the community. So it is important that we look beyond just our districts when we look at issues and make policy and act on projects. And so, again, I wanna thank everyone for their support. But I also, in addition to that, wanna recognize a couple people who are here. One of them, our former treasurer, Rafe Tricky. And I think he's trying to hide, but our former deputy mayor, Chuck Lowry. And also our former mayor, Terry Johnson. Thanks for sticking around and coming back. Anyway, with that, I just wanna say again, thank you very much, and I look forward to the next four years.
Wow. Just look around this room. This room reflects the diversity of the city of Oceanside, which is why I love this town so much. My dad decided, well, actually, my grandfather decided on Oceanside back in the '30s. The crops were failing, and they were following. They went all the way from Texas, his family, he and his five kids, to Oceanside, where he already had family. I still haven't traced that yet. I don't really know how long the Sanchez, this Sanchez family, because Sanchez is like Smith in Mexico, okay? But, oh, and Willie Buchanan's here too. Yeah. And Mama Sao, actually. Mama Sao, are you still here? Here she is, yes. My mom passed away, so I'm happy that I can still say mama. So Mama Sao, thank you so much. And back to this diversity that we have here. My dad came to Oceanside at seven years old, working in the fields. And absolutely, they had a dream of homeownership. Poverty was, I mean, most, I think, over 50% of the country was in poverty. And many of them, this is during the Great Depression. And so, we still have some family members who went through that and know what it is to be homeless, know what it is to try to use every single thing. My grandmother used to make us clothes out of the flour sacks. Yes. And my mom came from Zacatecas, was born in Zacatecas, grew up in Tijuana. And talk about poverty there, she went through that too. For a while there, she was also homeless. It was not unusual for families, for children, to be growing up in that kind of situation. And so, Oceanside has been that dream. My folks started working in the fields, then, you know, of course, to the city. My dad ended up working at Camp Pendleton, basically unloading trucks for the mess hall. And he did that for 35 years. My mom worked in a rubber factory in San Clemente, catching a ride, because there were several people from Oceanside who worked at that rubber factory. And she would show me, "Okay, look, see the Super Bowl? We made this." Right? So you can imagine how many Super Bowls we ended up having and trying to see if they really would go over the houses, right? But as kids here in Oceanside and growing up in Oceanside, it was so diverse. We had, in our community of East Side, we had military family housing, sterling homes. And so, friends would come and go. And they would talk about different places they'd lived, not only in the United States, but in the world. For me, it was almost a microcosm of what was out there, what could be, and how we worked together, and how we were students together. And it was a lot of love. Greg Smith, Class of '73, where are you, Greg? Yeah. Yeah. And John Smith, yeah, Class of '73. I'm Class of '74, you know, we're all very, very close. OHS, kinda say OHS, we are the best. But we really, we really, there was only one high school back then, okay? Okay, that's why I say it. That's why I say it. East campus, west campus, okay? But it was that. It was that. It was Samoan community, the black community, the Latino community, the Samoa, the, I said Samoan community, right? I did. And Phil Am community. I mean, we were all together, all together. And if we could do it back then, as Jimmy said, we can do this now. When I first came on the council, I know it was 24 years ago, but I had my dream of making diversity something positive, instead of back then, that it was negative, okay? So for me... Having a cultural district, you know, and just really just celebrating our diversity and celebrating the different ways that we are, and in fact, seeing like a common thread in our histories, histories of struggle, histories of dreams, histories of achieving those dreams. This was a really, really tough campaign, probably the toughest I've had. I do wanna thank my family. My brother Tony couldn't be here today. He's watching from home. And he has always stood there, especially after my dad passed. He stood in my dad's place. And I wanna say, Tony, I love you so much, and thank you for always being there. Of course, I have other family. I have a cousin, Tony, that actually came today. Where are you? Yeah, there you go. He said he just saw it, and then he came today. So, yeah. And all of you, I especially wanna thank Linda Slater, who ran the office. You know, really, single-handedly, I think she was really the, was it, the secret weapon for me, right? But I wanna thank everyone who came together and see the vision that I see and see that we can do this. This is a historic day, because for the first time, I believe, in the history of the city, we do have a different majority on the council. It comes, right? It's about people. It comes at a time when many folks are struggling. Did the pandemic hasten it? Maybe. But it is time for us to really focus on our community. You know, sometimes we say the locals. These are the voters. These are who got us to be in these positions to make that difference. And I believe that Jimmy Figueroa, Eric Joyce, and I, you know, and of course, Peter, we're gonna talk you into some of this, and of course, Rick, we're gonna talk you into some of this, but that we can do this in a compassionate way, that we are very, I mean, we grew up poor. Of course, we're gonna be very, very concerned about how money is spent. I mean, there's no better family to know how to, you know, make dollars, you know, stretch than a family that has grown up in poverty. So that Jimmy was born and raised here, that I was born and raised here, that's, I think that's the difference. We've seen Oceanside, well, me, because I'm a little older, right? But for, and watched it grow, and we know what the issues are. And we know we have to address homelessness. We have to, and we have to do it in a way that is really gonna quicken getting folks out of homelessness. So I'm very excited about that. I know staff, I'm very excited about the staff. Jonathan Borrego, our city manager, who has already started thinking, because we had already said we were gonna have a workshop on homelessness, and guess what? He's already, they're already, staff's already working on that. And, you know, we're gonna have to say goodbye to Mr. Mullen after how many years? 19 years here in Oceanside. So the 30th? 31st of December is his last day. So you might... Stand up, John. This guy kept us out of a lot of lawsuits, let me tell you. But I want to say, finally, that I hope that there is coordination, that we can come together, everybody at the table, everybody has to be at the table. I do believe that that is when we make our best decisions. We've got this wonderful council that is very, very positive. This is giving us a chance, an opportunity, to do things a little different in Oceanside. Please give us a chance to show that we do that, that we can do that. We've got the heart, we've got the plans, we've got the vision, and it's all about you. Thank you so much. So we now have items not on the agenda, public comment on items not on the agenda. Number five, do we have any requests to speak?
We only have one speaker on this item, Alex Goodman.
Alex.
From Oceanside Theater Company.
Hello. My name is Alex Goodman. What a weird day to be giving public comment when there's nothing else going on. But good afternoon, Mayor Sanchez, councilmembers, new and returning, congratulations, Jimmy. We're all really proud of you. My name is Alex Goodman. I'm the managing director of Oceanside Theater Company, your resident professional theater. I want to thank the city of Oceanside and council for your steadfast support of the arts in Oceanside. And of course, our vibrant, yay. And our vibrant cultural district, specifically for our partnership and the 20-year lease that OTC enjoys in the historic Sunshine Brooks Theater, a stone's throw away from these chambers. It is because of your commitment that our city continues to thrive as a hub for culture and creativity, enriching the lives of residents, local businesses, and visitors alike. I must also say, it's truly inspiring to see this, this council session begin with music, to have the.
Mariachi.
Yep.
They're going to play for another hour.
Art is a big part of what we do here. And again, thank you for supporting it. Today, I'm excited to invite you to a very special event. Over the next two weekends, we are presenting the world premiere of Manny and the Wise Queens, a delightful holiday play that is perfect for the whole family. This production is a point of pride for Oceanside. Not only does it highlight our community's creativity, but it also puts Oceanside as the, on the map as a city that champions original works and supports the arts in a meaningful way. We would be honored to host you and your families, everyone here in attendance today that come to one of these performances. Your presence would underscore the city's commitment to fostering the arts, and I'm certain you'll leave inspired by the talent on stage and the heart of this production. Thank you again for your support of Oceanside Theater Company and for helping make Oceanside a city where arts and culture can shine. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alex.
There are no more public speakers.
We do now have our closing prayer before we adjourn, and that is Pastor Sheldon Brown. So could you please rise?
Praise God. Our honorable mayor, councilmembers, and everyone else that was elected. Let's give glory to God. Father God, we come before you this day. We thank you, dear Lord. As you united us together for such a time as this, may your name be lifted up on high. Lord, it says in your word, if we bring these together, nothing can change us. Love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control. And then, Lord Jesus, you taught us how to show compassion. Let us show compassion to one another. For that, that's the one thing that unites us together as one and keeps us moving forward to change our communities and unite them together as one as well. I thank you, dear Lord, that you have brought so much to this city. Change. Change is already here. But Lord, we must be willing to be the change agents each and every day, humbling ourselves, disagreeing and agreeing with one another, but always being polite and respectful. Help us to honor you in all that we say and do, Lord, and may this city continue to rejoice and grow together as your hand is upon this city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Okay, I hope you liked the mariachi. They're called mariachi fuente, Fuente de San Diego. So they're going to be playing for the reception. We're going to have a reception in the foyer that's going to also include the balcony area. And they will be playing between here and the, in the council chambers and outside. Refreshments for you all. I hope you have enough. Okay. So I think they're sandwiches, right?
Sandwiches, cookies.
Cookies, food platters, you know. The city clerk is doing it all, you know? So thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn to the next regularly scheduled meeting, which is Wednesday, December 18th at 2:30 PM. Meeting adjourned.